Item five is receipt of petitions and correspondence from the public. Before we open the public speaking, I'd like to ask our town attorney to read the Roberts Law before we get into our actual meeting here tonight for the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are the Town Council and Public Presentation decorum and procedure requirements. During all portions of a regular Town Council meeting, including its public presentation portion, the following requirements of decorum by both public speakers and Town Council members must be followed. These are requirements of the Town Code, Roberts Rules of Order, which are incorporated into the Town Code, and federal court decisions interpreting First Amendment constitutional law and free speech. The mayor, as the presiding officer of Town Council, shall enforce the rules of procedure, preserve order and decorum, and appoint all committees. Every member of Town Council shall address the presiding officer, who is the mayor, before speaking, confine himself to the question before the body, and avoid all personal or in decorous language. Public speakers and council members must use the same civility, decorum, orderly behavior, relevancy of comments to the subject at hand, and appropriate language in addressing Town Council as they would use in addressing a court, a judge in a court of law. No profanity, vulgar, or sexist language or irrelevant commentary is allowed. There can be no personal attacks. A speaker can condemn the nature or likely consequences of a proposed measure in strong terms, but under no circumstances can the speaker attack or question the personalities or the motives of another member. The measure, but not the man, is the subject of debate. A speaker may not speak to any matter that is the subject of a public hearing during the same regular meeting. A speaker who violates any of those things that I've just mentioned above should be promptly asked to stop speaking in that fashion by the mayor. If such speaker does not promptly so stop, the mayor should ask the police officer at the meeting to remove such speaker forcibly if necessary. And if the speaker does not remove himself, he can even be charged with a misdemeanor crime. Federal court decisions have established that public policy in maintaining civility and decorum during the public comment sessions of public meetings, both to ensure the efficient conduct of the people's business and to maximize citizen participation in the discussion, overrides the speaker's First Amendment rights of free speech. Governmental bodies may enforce policies against personal attacks in furtherance of legitimate governmental purpose to preserve order and decorum in meetings, so long as they do not use the personal attack policy as a pretext to squelch a particular substantive viewpoint. If a council member feels a speaker is being disorderly or not showing proper decorum or conducting personal attacks or is making comments that are irrelevant, and the council member wishes to bring this matter to the mayor's attention, the councilman can do so by saying the following: "Mr. Mayor, point of order." Then wait to be recognized by the mayor. If not recognized, repeat: "Point of order, Mr. Mayor." Once recognized, the councilman can say something like, "I believe this speaker is violating proper rules of decorum," or "personal attack or questioning the motives of council," or "making false statements of fact which are harmful to someone's reputation." The mayor either stops the speaker, or if the mayor overrides the point of order, the councilman can state, "I appeal the decision of the mayor. The appeal is not debatable." The mayor states, "Shall the decision of the mayor be upheld?" A tie vote sustains the mayor's ruling. It requires only a simple majority vote to sustain the appeal. And that's the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Attorney. This time, we'll be opening up our public presentation. I'd like for you to come forward, three minutes, speak, and hopefully that you could hold it to three minutes this time. And we'll begin this evening. How many speakers do we have?
We have four.
Okay. Would you call the first speaker, please?
David Downs.
My name is David Downs, 160 Old Brown Town Road. For the past 33 years, I've practiced criminal defense in Front Royal at my office, 14 Chester We are dying in this town. I'm not referring to COVID, where we've lost seven members of the community. I'm referring to at least 13 drug overdose deaths in Warren County this year alone. There have also been 68 overdose calls reported by our Joint Drug Task Force for this year, 20 in April alone. Today, grand jury returned to Warren County Circuit Court, we had over 25 defendants in drug-related charges, and over half of the docket represented drug-related charges. This has been my area of expertise. I feel like I can speak with some authority before this body and the sheriff's office I work with, the probation officers that I have discussed in preparing for this report. Notwithstanding, no emergency director has been appointed, nor has this even been mentioned on a council's agenda, either here of the Board of Supervisors, to address an epidemic that has killed twice the number of our residents from COVID-19. Let's recognize that we have limited resources. We only have so much time, tax dollars, patients, to respond to marches, protests, petitions, referendums. So I must ask, do drug addicts' lives matter? I'm here asking for your help before another 13 families lose a loved one. I have 13-year-old twins. I sure as heck don't want them to see one of their friends die from an overdose or see them go down that path. We can, at a minimum, address the demand side of the illegal drug business and let ELEO continue their efforts to address the supply side. If there is no demand, the drug dealers are out of business. First, let's talk about it with our friends and loved ones who are at risk. Let's have that dialogue started. Pretending it does not exist or won't affect your family members or my family members has failed. Second, let's find a way to secure a detox center for our community. I believe Galaxx is the closest one, and that's 250 miles away. For those of you not familiar with the industry, that's when you have a client that is so out of it because of their addiction, they have no control over themselves and they need a detox center. Whether, unfortunately, it has frequently been jail, but detox, where you have trained professionals to assist them through that detoxification, is life-saving. And I've watched too many of my clients overdose after I've gotten them out of jail because they begged, they didn't want to go to jail. Third, let's encourage the building of a rehabilitation center or an Oxford House model in our community. I understand that nobody wants them in their backyard, but the struggle in getting help is real. Fourth, let's stop using probationers as confidential informants by the Drug Task Force and promptly have them advise their probationers if they have violated the terms of their probation. They're risking their lives, introducing them back into the same environment that got them there in the first place. It's happening. They say that it's not supposed to, but it happens. Fifth, let's increase education in the schools. The DARE programs were a good start. The epidemic is not unique to Front Royal, so let's not be ashamed of that fact. How we address it will be how we are remembered.
Thank you, Mr. Downs. Next speaker, please.
Kelly Walker.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. I live at 939 South Marshall Street, and I own the studio at 105 East Main Street, directly across from Town Hall. I want to talk tonight for just a minute about the recent closures of Main Street from Friday evening until Monday morning. I applaud your effort for doing that for our restaurants, to help them get back on their feet during the COVID crisis. But now, I feel that we're harming more businesses than we're helping. There's many small businesses on Main Street that are not benefiting from the closure. I'm not sure how many of you have been downtown during the closure. I'm down there almost every weekend. I have classes. I'm not a regular shop like most people. It's not somewhere you walk in and out to come in and buy. I'm a teaching studio, so when I'm there is when I'm having classes. And I'm there at a variety of times during the day on Saturday and Sunday, and I've yet to count a dozen people on Main Street when I'm down there. It's a ghost town. I bring a lot of people in from out of the community to take classes. And when I have someone from Winchester or Warrenton or Berryville come in and say, as one did a few weeks ago, "Why would the town pave Main Street on a weekend?" I said, "I don't think we're paving Main Street." They said, "But it's closed, and there's nobody on the street." I said, "This is an attempt to help our restaurants." So it's a bad visual when we bring people in from out of town, which is not helping tourism in any way, because you know word of mouth does a great deal to help with tourism. So I ask you to consider another way to help the businesses on Main Street. I've been told that opening the street all the time is not a good thing. We need to close it at least a little bit to help everybody, and I think most people on the street are willing to compromise. But the compromise that we've tried to talk about at a recent meeting was not accepted. We had a vote at that meeting where three or four people from some businesses voted and only one from others. So I would ask if people are reporting back to you about a vote, that you consider whether or not the vote was one business, one vote, because I feel like the vote was skewed and that the report was skewed as well. I think that there's a way to help everybody. I think we could have a closure one day, one weekend, a month, where we all share a theme and try to bring people downtown and be enthusiastic about downtown and what we have to offer. We still don't have enough shopping on Main Street to justify closing the street for people to walk up and down and shop. We just don't have that number of shops. I've walked the street a couple of times in the last week just to look to be sure, to refresh my memory. We have far fewer shops than we do service industry or closed businesses or even government buildings. That's just not enough. It's about a half a dozen, seven businesses where people can actually go in and out and purchase something that's not a restaurant. That's not enough to close a street. So I would ask you to consider that as you think about the future of what we're going to do with Main Street during this pandemic. I think that most of the business owners on the street are willing to work together and try to make something work, but we've got to compromise. We've got to listen to everybody. There's so many different types of businesses and different reasons why people have their business on Main Street. I know I said something once about one of the smaller business owners having a rough time during the closure, and what I was told was, "Well, how much money do they make anyway when they're open?" That's not the point. The point is, they have a business on Main Street. They're supplementing a social security income, so it doesn't matter if they make $200 or $2,000. That's helping them, and we need to continue to try to help keep their business open. We've had too many businesses already closed during this pandemic. I hate to see another small business close, but we're going to see more if we don't do something soon. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Next speaker, please.
Ina Kolasnik. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, can you hear me?
You speak in.
My name is Ina Kolasnik. I'm owner of Nicole Jewelry Designs, the last remaining jewelry store on Main Street. I came to speak to you not only as a business owner, real estate owner, but also as a resident of downtown. My late husband and I own building on Main Street for the last 24 years and retail shop for 18 years. The issue that concerns me is the weekend closures of the Main Street that started a few months ago during Phase Two of COVID-19 recovery. Now we are in Phase Three, and to my surprise, I noticed last Tuesday, the town installed permanent signs prohibiting parking from 4:00 p.m. on Fridays until 7:00 a.m. on Mondays. When I made inquiries with my neighbors, I found out that on last meeting on August 3rd, Town Council voted for East Main weekend closures. My attempt to obtain minutes from last meeting were unsuccessful. Video of the meeting wasn't published on Town of Front Royal website either. Nobody from Town Administrator Administration contacted me or many other businesses I spoke with to inquire how the closure of the street helped in our businesses. I wish the town would communicate with local businesses about important decisions they are making that might affect us. We all know that the parking is an issue in downtown, and on regular basis, I hear from my customers that they had hard time finding parking spot. Closing East Main Street eliminates 28 parking spots, making it even harder to find place to park, and as a result, it negatively affects businesses. My building is located in the middle of Main Street. A couple of years ago, Town Planning and Zoning Office allowed building a fence behind my building, blocking the back entrance, so the only access to my building I have through the Main Street. When I moved to Main Street, I anticipated street closure two times a year, like for Spring Festival and Fall Festival. But the street is blocked for almost half of the time now. As a resident, I have to carry my groceries from far away and make arrangements for heavy loads in advance. How attractive is the perspective to live in a place that has limited accessibility looks to you? Probably not very much. In making your decision, please think of East Main Street as a place where people live. Besides inconveniences, blocking part of East Main Street creates extra obstacles in time of medical emergencies or fire, when every second matters. The help from emergency crew would delay it simply because of the blockage, and in my case, it's a blockage from the back and from the front. In summary, I wanted to say, it is time to open Main Street for all businesses, not only restaurants. Weekend closures of East Main Street may help to benefit two or three businesses, but hurts a lot more businesses and residents, and it must come to an end. Here is the petition that was signed by local businesses on Main Street, not some random people and residents. And could they pass to?
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The last speaker is Samuel Porter.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council members.
Need your name and address.
Yes, sir. My apologies. Samuel Porter, 216 Fletcher Street, Front Royal, Virginia. Decorum is very important, Mr. Mayor, so personally, I wanted to say thank you. As a town resident, I think it's important that you keep that in a place like this. Good job. And, Mr. Mayor, and council members, petitions, referendums, marches, protests, although can be costly, can never equate to what it'd be like to live in a place or a world where black people aren't feared and get an equal footing regardless of their complexion. I'm not an advocate of the organization Black Lives Matter, but I'm not afraid to say the slogan Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Anyone else?
No, sir. I apologize. I skipped over you. Sorry, Tom. Tom, Tom Sayer.
Sorry, Tom.
That's okay. Tom Sayer, 835 Shenandoah Shores Road, Front Royal, Virginia. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to keep my comments very brief and trying to bring some levity to the situation of what we're going through, not only in the United States of America, but tends to happen in our own locality. And there's been times that people said that things that I had said or done was not true, not false, where it was false and that, and ended up becoming true. And so I thought I would share something tonight that I'm sure many people don't believe in, but I thought maybe I would share it and see where it hits. Our lady Medjigori has been appearing since 1981 in Hertzegonia. On July 25th, 2020, she said, "Dear children, in this peaceless time in which the devil is harvesting souls to draw them to himself, I'm calling you to persevere in prayer. Said in prayer, you discover the God of love and hope. Little children, take the cross in your hands. May it be your encouragement for love to always win in a special way now when the cross and faith are rejected. You be a reflection and example with your lives that faith and hope are still alive and a new world of peace is possible. I'm with you and receive for you before my son, Jesus. Thank you for having responded to my call." The second point that I have is, I had made a FOIA request back on July 29th, 2020, and I had a request that now there's been a FOIA opinion that's been favorable to me. And I thanked Mr. Napier for his courtesy over the years. He's been a personal friend. I thanked him for his excellent work as a town attorney. And my request for public records of any type as relates to my FOIA request, I received a response regarding the secret meetings behind closed doors among four individuals. And there's an excellent analysis of FOIA counsel Alan Gernhardt, wherein he states that the cited exemption for records recorded in or compiled exclusively for use in closed meetings held lawfully pursuant to 2.2-3711 would not apply if the record was in fact used in a context other than in a closed meeting. It would no longer be exclusively for use in closed meetings. And that's what happened here. It was not used in a closed meeting. So I look forward to receiving this information soon and kindly remember that any personal notes and written mathematical calculations from the secret meeting be included in my request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. No other speakers?
No, sir, there is no more.
Okay, thank you. Item six is reports of the town manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First item that I'd like to discuss tonight is an award that's been given to BJ Wilson, our finance director. The Government Finance Officers Association provided a report and analyzed our CAFERS, our comprehensive annual financial report, as of June 30th, 2019, and gave a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by our government and its management. When a certificate of achievement is awarded to a government, an award of financial reporting achievement is presented to the individual or department design. And to put in perspective, the CAFER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFER. Members of council, for the last 33 years, the Finance Department of the Town of Front Royal has received this, and I'm pleased that BJ has continued the tradition for the last three years of receiving this award. That's a good accomplishment. Congratulations, BJ. As far as some other matters. As far as some other matters, East Stonewall Drive Bridge closure, the town will have a contractor performing repairs on East Stonewall Drive Bridge. Street will be closed August 12th through September 30th from walking trail to Fletcher Street. Signs will be up and placed. Also, have some great news, the 17th Street slip lane, we finally have the deed of easement, and we have all, everything's been recorded and was staked out today. We're going to have the public works beginning their work hopefully this Thursday, weather permitting. They're anticipating in approximately three weeks for the construction, and I did talk about possibly doing it at night. And frankly, the biggest issue is manpower. If something happens during the day, they're going to need to take some of those crews off of that shift. So the strong recommendation of leadership in the public works was go ahead and do it during the day. But I did propose that. So they will be closing that section of the street during some of the work, but I'm very happy that it's finally getting started. We had challenges in getting the easement. As far as the CARES Act update, I'm very pleased to announce that, as you remember, the Town of Front Royal was provided $1.1 million towards small business assistance and recovery. As of today, 5:00 p.m., we've issued 50 checks in the amount of $457,500, and there's still 15 in process. The deadline was today at 5:00 p.m., and so the plan is, we're going to finish out those reviews, the last 15. Hopefully, by Thursday of this week, we'll have a meeting with the committee, the CARES Act Committee, and we'll come up with a recommendation as far as how we're going to address the rest of the funds and have a round two. We may make some modifications to the levels. There's a lot of different things in discussion. I was informed last week that Town of Front Royal is likely to receive another million dollars in CARES Act grant funding, so the committee will also be coming up with a recommendation as far as how to spend that money as well, once I identify the timing of it and the level of assurance that we're going to receive it. Also, the last point tonight is, it is with great pleasure that I can introduce to you Mr. Tim Wilson, who is our Community Development and Planning Director. Tim, why don't you stand so they can, take your mask off so they can see your smiley face? (laughter). Thank you, Tim. Tim was originally from Newport News, Virginia. He's a graduate of Christopher Newport University with a degree in economics. Tim has made public service his career and has nearly 30 years of experience working for the town and county governments in both Virginia and North Carolina. He has extensive knowledge and experience in the field of planning and community development, and has served as a director of such departments for local governments for over 25 years. He and his wife Sharon have been married for 35 years and have two adult daughters and three grandchildren that they enjoy spending time with. Tim is also an outdoor enthusiast and finds the Town of Front Royal and surrounding area as an ideal place where he can pursue both his personal and professional interests and is very glad to be part of the town organization. And from a personal perspective, we had, I had approximately nine applications submitted. Tim absolutely rose to the top, and during my conversations with him, one thing really resonated with me is that in his past experience in working with individuals in the planning department, he wants to try to find a way to get to a yes, as opposed to just saying no. And so that really resonated with me and his, the business-friendly attitude that he had. So I think he's going to be a great asset to our community, and it's a real honor that I was able to meet him and get him hired onto the town. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item tonight is requests and inquiries of council members.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say welcome, Tim.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank Mr. Downs for bringing up the drug epidemic. You know, I've been either on planning commission or on Town Council now for almost five and a half years, and it's something that I've heard discussions about, but have yet to see any major initiatives taken, undertaken in this, in this community between the local government bodies and our law enforcement and community members. And I think that there is a real opportunity for such committees to exist. 250 miles away is a long ways. In addition to the drug epidemic and finding resources available for those individuals, it's behavioral health is another issue that our community faces, and it faces the same logistical challenge of being about 200 to 250 miles away for any centers of help. So these are two very important things that cripple the citizens of our community, and I would be happy to have further discussions with Mr. Downs and our law enforcement leaders on how we can work together and figure out ways to establish resources, because I agree, it is an epidemic, and it is something that's going to be tearing apart this town slowly but surely if we don't get a handle on it. So thank you. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to, I was hoping Mr. Boyers would be here so I could thank him personally, but I just wanted to share that on Friday afternoon, after having a late lunch with some teacher colleagues working back in school, I left Splunkers and on Pine Street. As I was pulling out, there was a rather large pothole on Pine Street, and so I decided to do what I'd learned here at the town council meeting. I called Town Hall, let them know where it was, and that was late Friday afternoon. And on my way to the council meeting tonight, I drove by there, and it was fixed. It was repaired. So thank Mr. Boyers and his crew for me. So I think that's the way it's supposed to work, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. So the other week, our meeting kind of got a little chaotic, and I was part of that chaos. I privately apologized to Eugene, and I just want to take a moment and apologize to the public as well. Mayor, of course, is well within his rights to call a point of order, and so I just wanted to apologize to the public. David, I'm also very interested in the drug programs. We can get started. Roanoke was able to do a really good job by combining resources between social services, law enforcement, government, that sort of thing. And so I think that's important as well, and that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Report the mayor. I'd like to thank everybody that came up this evening and spoke and held to the three minutes are pretty close, and want to thank everybody for that. Again, I want to thank Mr. Downs for coming and bringing the report that he brought is very, very good for us to understand all of these things, and I'm hoping that maybe we can all get together and work something out that might enhance this program. Also, I'd like to welcome Tim to you today, and hopefully I get to work with you for a long time. And so it's welcome to the board and to the Board of Front Royal or to the Town of Front Royal. And if we can help you in any way, please feel free to call upon us, because I know being a new person in Front Royal, you may need some help in some issues that we can all provide for you. So with that, that's my report this evening. Next item this evening is the proposal or addition or deletions to the agenda. Hearing none. Seventh is a consent agenda, which we have no items. Next item tonight is council approval of the Loomis Network, Inc. franchise agreement. Could you, would you read the summary for that, please, Tina?
Council's requested to affirm on its first reading a request from Loomis Networks, Inc., DBA Segra for a limited five-year non-exclusive franchise and poll attachment agreement with the town to use the public ways to construct, operate, and maintain a fiber optic telecommunications system, the term of which can be extended for four additional five-year terms upon successive agreement of the parties as presented. The agreement will commence upon approval of Town Council and execution by the town manager. Per the Assistant Town Attorney, the agreement is considered an ordinance therefore requiring two readings.
You say this is required two meetings? Shouldn't it be a public hearing then?
No, this ordinance requires two readings.
Okay, all right, that's good.
Do I hear a motion, please?
Yes, I move that council affirm on its first reading a request from Loomis Networks, Inc., DBA Segra for a limited five-year non-exclusive franchise and poll attachment agreement with the town to use the public ways to construct, operate, and maintain a fiber optic telecommunications system, the term of which can be extended for four additional five-year terms upon successive agreement of the parties as presented. I further move that council authorize the interim town manager to execute all documents on behalf of the town.
Second.
Motion, and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelak.
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item denied is item number nine, resolution to COVID-19 infectious disease preparedness and response plan. Would you read the?
Council's requested to approve a resolution that adopts the requirement for a written COVID-19 infectious disease preparedness and response plan for Town of Front Royal employees under the jurisdiction of the Virginia Occupational Safety and Health Program. Revisions requested to the plan from council at the August 3rd, 2020 work session have been included in the attached plan.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve a resolution that adopts the requirements for a written COVID-19 infectious disease preparedness and response plan for the Town of Front Royal employees under the jurisdiction of the Virginia Occupational Safety and Health Program as presented.
Second.
Have a motion, and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Laura McIntosh. I believe Laura was a major contributor in writing this plan, and for those of you that aren't aware, at last week's work session, there was mention that other jurisdictions had actually looked at our plan. So just congratulations to Laura for working so hard on this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cockrell beat me to it, Laura, but I was going to, I was going to thank you as well. This is extensive. This is a lot of work, and as everybody's aware, the COVID-19 situation is in flux. And just when you feel like you have a particular area pinned down, something changes, and then you have to rewrite department policies and protocols. And so I just wanted to express my gratitude towards the town for being on top of this and really being one of the first municipalities in area to be able to roll this out in such a short timeframe, as I know it's not easy work. So thank you for taking seriously the safety of our employees and your colleagues.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelak.
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Thompson.
Yes.
Next item is item 10, deed of dedication, First Bank, West 17th Street. Would you read just synopsis, please?
On January 27th, 2020, council approved and accepted a developers' cash escrow agreement with Sheets Incorporated for the town to complete the West 17th Street and Shenandoah Avenue intersection improvements by adding a slip lane and to acquire right-of-way from the adjacent bank property. Council's requested to approve a deed of dedication with First Bank for 594 square feet on West 17th Street to accommodate the slip lane to be constructed at West 17th Street and North Shenandoah Avenue.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve a deed of dedication with First Bank for 594 square feet on West 17th Street to accommodate a slip lane to be constructed at West 17th Street and North Shenandoah Avenue as presented.
Second. We have a motion, and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just one comment regarding this. Should be noted that First Bank donated that portion of land, and I hope to have them at a next work session or other regular meeting to properly thank them for being great corporate citizens and corporate businesses in our community.
Good, good. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelak.
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carried. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We will now go into a work session in the other room. Anybody would like to stay is welcome. We will not, I don't believe, have anything to bring forward tonight, will we? Okay, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.